When I first come to the meeting.
All right, it's six o'clock folks. We'll get started with our regular meeting and I'll call the meeting to order and we'll have our pledge and Commissioner Alderson is gonna do it and our invocation is gonna be Ms. Pam Johnson, our newest member. So if you would please stand and.
By the God, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to get together. We thank you for a new police officer for our city and for all our officers and firemen and all that they do on a daily basis to keep us safe. Be with us as we start this meeting. Be with our words and our thoughts and give us wisdom in the decisions that we make. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please ma'am. And Commissioner Granberry is joining us by Zoom and her husband stopped by just a few moments ago and picked her package up. So Ms. Granberry, I'm sorry you can't join us, but I completely understand.
Bill White?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Willie Alderson?
Here.
And Pamela Johnson?
Here.
Four, is it right?
Four.
Four members present.
Thank you. All right, next we have approval and correction of our minutes from December the fifteenth study session, December the twentieth at our regular meeting. Once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion for both.
I'll make a motion to accept a study session for December fifteenth and a regular meeting for December twentieth.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Awards and presentations and appointments oath of office for our new police officer Andrew Buffy. So gentlemen, if y'all will come forward and you're doing that right, Ms. Loretta?
Yeah, Beverly's glasses on, Karen. Aye, Andrew Buffy.
Aye, Andrew Buffy.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
The state of Tennessee.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
And charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
My duties.
My duties.
In accordance with the general orders of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
In accordance with general orders of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, we got it.
So help me God.
Thank you. Andrew, it's great to have you. Please be safe. But we certainly appreciate what you're doing, more than you'll know.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
We saw Andrew from Columbia.
Oh, cool.
Even better, yeah.
Cool. All right, mayor's appointments. We've got several of these tonight and most of them are just reappointments. So I'm gonna move through them. If anybody has any questions up here, please don't hesitate to stop me. Beer board, nothing changes. Each of these will just be reappointed for a one-year term, which is up Jimmy Hines, David Workman and William Bryson.
We need to vote on each one, so.
Can we not do it collectively?
I think there's too many.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, entertain a motion for beer board.
Make a motion for beer board.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals. John Hunter has agreed to serve again. We have to have one person on the BZA from the Planning Commission. John does those two roles.
And his term would be to January two thousand twenty-six.
That's correct. We're gonna have a couple of more next month, I'll just tell you. Lisa Cole, which is currently the chairman, has agreed to serve, but her term is not up until next month, as well as we have, Katie's been in touch with someone to replace Pam. It's your request. Pam's coming off of BZA. So it will be, as of right now, I'm not gonna try to pronounce that last night.
It's Burke. It doesn't look like Burke, but it's Burke.
Lee Burke, and I think he lives on Pope Lane, you know? He's in the city after. Had multiple jobs related.
His whole career's been in parking for musicalities, yeah.
Stuff like that.
Lee Burke?
Yes.
Lee, yeah. So the only one we've actually got for tonight is John Hunter being reappointed for three years. So entertain a motion on that.
I'm gonna make a motion for John Hunter to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals to twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
A second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we've got Historic Zoning. These are just reappointments. Donna Marisi until one of twenty-eight, and Ms. Granberry is gonna stay on that until November of twenty twenty-four. Entertain a motion for that.
And Ms. Granberry is staying on because she was a commission, a Planning Commission member at the time of her appointment.
That's correct. So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Historic Zoning Commission Board members.
Got a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission, Ms. Granberry stepping down and Pam will be appointed to that through eleven of twenty twenty-four. Douglas Marshall has resigned and we have asked Cedric Hollis, which Cedric has agreed to do until January of twenty twenty-four, and that's just filling Douglas's unexpired term. And we will reappoint Jennifer Graham and John Hunter until January of twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission Board members.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Recreation Commission. We, since Cedric is going on to the Planning Commission, Cedric is going to step back from the Rec Commission and Lori Knowles will be appointed to that. And I don't have an exact date for her, Kate, I'm sorry.
January twenty, two thousand twenty-five would be to your term.
All right. Next, we have Commissioner Alderson has resigned now that she's on the power board and we have asked Vice Mayor Granberry to serve until eleven of twenty twenty-four, which would be your unexpired term. And then Bedford, it's time for your reappointment through January of twenty-six.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any questions? Entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion to put these folks on the Recreation Commission.
Got a motion in?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, in February, we'll have a couple for the Communication Committee, correct?
Yes. Well, actually, the entire Communication Committee is, will be up.
That's right. It's the way it comes.
We're hoping to have a meeting between now and then, and you'll also have the ones that you already mentioned this evening.
Right. And then, Ms. Willie and Pam, you're gonna have a couple that y'all still, let y'all make your recommendations. So that takes care of all of those. Any questions? Okay. Uh, completion review of, review of unfinished business from prior meetings?
There is none, Mayor.
Monthly report for mayor. I don't really have anything this month. Can't think of anything. Monthly financial and budget, please.
Evening.
Good evening. Just a, you know, little bit of, of information for the, especially for the new ones on the, the board. December is one of the largest property tax months where we collect the most property tax. We'll collect the most property taxes in the month of December and February. The reason being in December is people are trying to get them paid to get the, to be able to deduct them off of their income taxes. And also, the mortgage companies, when people have escrows, if they pay their, um, property taxes through escrow, those mortgage companies will send us checks at the end of December. For the last week of December, we had, um, three different packets that had to have, that had seven hundred transactions that had to be entered individually. So it's, it's a very busy time, but that is when we will get the majority of our revenue from the general fund will come in those two months. They'll come in December and then, of course, when they do in February. And that'll spill over into March some, but typically not a whole lot. So I just wanted to give you that, just a little bit of background, so you have that some information to understand when you're sitting, looking at the reports and you see, well, revenue for this month went way up. Well, that's, that's why. And what I try to do, and I know, I don't know if you noticed in the reports, is to compare this year and last year, so that you see where, where we're at on the collections as far as percentages go. And that way you can kind of gauge where we're at. The years during COVID were, they were totally different, but now we're starting to get back to the normal trends that we had been seeing year to year. Other than that, you've got your packets. Actually, I emailed those out to you.
Yeah.
If you have any questions, let me know.
I don't have any. I attended the, uh, Power System Meeting last Wednesday morning and, uh, just a quick update. Commissioner Alderson, if you'd like to chime in. That thing continues to be run like a well-oiled machine. They have got some pretty big expenses right now related to the re, I don't know what, I don't know exactly what you'd call it, but they're putting a new transformer in out at Mount Joy. And it's just about ready to power back up. Cost overruns wound up being about six hundred, seven hundred thousand, which they've managed to have the money set aside for that, which was not. So just FYI, but that thing continues to just home right along.
Yeah. And I think you had, uh, somebody had asked me, we have been, prior to the USDA loans, we had been paying roughly forty thousand dollars to the old lagoon note. When we started this process and started to rebuild the new sewer in that project, part of that funding was to pay off that alone. So since that time, and that's been a couple of, three years?
Two years ago.
Whatever you think, add me, add a year.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyway, we, um, have been setting aside, just like we were making those payments. And that is, um, that will be used, um, and you'll see that in your report, that the balance on that account. That, that funding is to be used for, first, the two hundred fifty thousand that we've, that we've obligated, and that first USDA loan, the USDA rep, he has advised us that we're probably getting close to that, the end of that loan, and we will be starting to, start with the grant portion of that.
So we'll be making a loan payment.
And so we'll be making a loan payment. And that will be done out of that forty thousand. That loan payment will be roughly eighteen, nineteen thousand a month.
The difference will continue to keep setting aside.
Putting aside.
Yeah. And then that will help, hopefully help some of the cost overruns.
Let's see, when we did that, I've gotta go back and think when we did that. We were paying three point nine or four point nine.
Four point, yeah.
Nine on that loan and we got that money at one percent.
Yeah, so we pay.
We were gonna start putting that money aside. It's over a million five right now.
And I think you mentioned at the study session that we'll be talking to you about the project, part of the sewer projects that we carved out because we could not afford it, to revisit the costs and what, what we may want to put back in.
Yeah. All right, any more questions for Loretta? Hearing none, entertain a motion for her report.
Make a motion to accept the report, is that right?
Got a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Just a couple of things. Want to remind everybody that this Thursday is Third Thursday and the stores are open and they have a few things going on, including some music and restaurants having some specials. Tonight, you know that we had a public hearing for the city's CDBG next Tuesday at the county at three thirty and the twenty-fourth, we'll be doing the same thing to try and get the county's CDBG, always looking for all the grants that we can get. And then just mentioning briefly that I did have some complaints of the rain and problems caused by that over this past weekend that we're dealing with, but just letting you all know that.
Okay. And the rain was unusual for this time of year a little bit. All right, any questions for Kate? Hearing none, special reports from other departments, wastewater.
The barge report you have in front of you, sewer trunk line, you've heard, uh, when we had the CDBG meeting, we have to close that sewer trunk line out before we can apply for the next grant. We're working closely on it, but if you drive by there, you see vehicles there daily, but I think we're getting closer and closer. Rainy Street, you're gonna have those bids in front of you in February. And then tonight, you have the bids, we'll have the bids in front of you on the wastewater treatment lagoon project. So kind of moving right along.
Okay. Any questions on wastewater, since it is such a big item? Hearing none, Mount Pleasant gas?
We don't have a report for gas. I always say that everything is great in gas, but I also want to just give you, put you on the radar to know that we're gonna have to start working on the infrastructure there. And, uh, gas lines are old and we need to make sure that we, we take a look at that, but we are in the process. You all approved to get a gas model done and that'll all be part of it. And just, just keeping that on your radar that we always have to take care of our infrastructure.
You got it.
At least we've got money there.
Yeah, we got a bunch of. Thing's still running like a well-oiled machine, but it's time to make sure the infrastructure's there to support the growth. U Business, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven oh six. This is a first reading. An ordinance correcting the Scrivener's error. An ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten forty-four. Corey, you wanna cover this book?
The Hatchman A is the book. So this is the Thera Pre-Treatment Ordinance. Most of this is just reflecting what the state law is. We made some changes in two thousand seventeen to reflect changes in the state law. At that time, when we did that, honestly, we just made some typos in that we included the old state rules and regulation numbers. And so the references are not right because those, those rules moved their place. So the substance of the ordinance should be the same. We're calling it a Scrivener's error because it is a typo, not a change in substance.
Right.
We actually have done this once before in.
The same ordinance.
The same ordinance.
And the state wanted more changes.
Well, after we sent it off to the people who review it, they found another one. And so we had changed all and then we made another change. So this is strictly just getting the numbers right. And I hate that we have to keep putting it in front of you, but it is an ordinance. And so the only way I felt comfortable changing it was to bring it in front of y'all. So.
So twenty nineteen ten forty-four will become twenty twenty-three eleven oh six.
Yes. And, and what's attached is the right ordinance. That's correct.
Any questions for Corey? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of changing ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten forty-four to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven oh six, as presented by our lawyer.
All right, got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven oh seven. Again, this is a public hearing in a first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-six. Ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the City of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July the first of twenty twenty-two and ending June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
And Mayor and Commissioners, you should have a bullet point list with something like this that covers everything that Loretta has incorporated into the budget amendment. The only thing I want to comment on is we have radio equipment here under capital projects because it's in our capital projects budget. We're, we're negotiating with Murray County right now to see if we'll be buying that equipment or leasing it. That could change. So, but not knowing if we would be taking on that expense right now, we went ahead and included it. But if you look through there and have questions, please let us know. This will be, have a second reading in February, so we have times, have time to add to, tweak it. And then we'll have one final budget amendment that we'll vote on, uh, June before we get out of this fiscal year.
I, I ran through it pretty in depth over the day and some of the stuff and it's, seems to be right on the capital projects. A great number of that is to do with the sewer and everything else. Correct?
The capital projects.
Bonds. That's what, that's what I'm saying. It's the bonds that are out there.
Yes. And that basically, if you look at the total of those projects, that totals the bond amount.
And, and then if you.
Two million five or three thousand.
Yeah. And then if you look at some of the rest of them, if you look at the revenue and expenditures, if you look, it's almost exactly the same numbers added. You just put a few dollars with it. If anybody will see my worksheet, it's right in.
What about the FEMA bound? Y'all heard anymore about that?
No, we have not. The only thing that, I think, the only thing that our, we, we work with these outside consultants because FEMA speaks a different language and they, they are concerned that there is a, a new way you're supposed to report things and they think that they may require us to do that, even though the last time they spoke with them, they said, everything you have is where it needs to be, but they're afraid that there's any requirement and they'll make us refile something, but it doesn't, it's not a negative or a positive. It's just filing more paperwork, which is, I mean, they told us three years ago it was a slow process and three years later.
Still a slow process.
We ain't crashed or grown, have we?
We have. We have a new one, though.
Yeah, we got a new.
Did you crash it?
That's why you have on here insurance.
Yeah, that's why I was looking there. Yeah, that's why I was looking there.
Man, it exploded.
They don't give them things away. All right, any questions?
Between now and second reading, if there's something that anybody questions, please let me know.
Again, anybody wants to say, I've got my, my work stuff sticker with it, so. Entertain a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven oh seven, as presented.
Got, got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty. This and, and the next one will, will be of the same, but we're gonna go through them both separately. But it is a resolution to accept ownership and maintenance of sewer improvements servicing the Sugar Creek subdivision, section three.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we're asking you to defer these to the February twenty-first meeting. They kind of tie in with F, the letters of credit for water and sewer as well. They'll all, all hopefully be ready to go forward in February.
All right, so I need a, I, I need a, we better do those separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion to defer resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty?
I'll make a motion to defer twenty twenty-two dash fifty to February.
Got a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to defer twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one, and this is for the water improvements servicing the Sugar Creek subdivision.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to defer resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one to February.
Got a motion. We have a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, first one of the year. Resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to participate in public entity partners' property conservation matching grant program.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is one that we applied for and we have been awarded. It's a four thousand dollar grant and it's a four thousand dollar match on our part. And it's updating all of the outdoor lighting at the community center and, which was locally in, in bad shape. So we're excited about that and we, we are prepared to make that match and that's what that grant is about.
Good. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, as presented.
Got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, letters of credit for Sugar Creek. Again, this needs to be deferred. Entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to defer Sugar Creek to February?
Got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I know y'all, we talked about it in the study session, but the, the reason for the request for deferral, so I can make sure that the bond matches.
Was required, exactly. But sometimes I've seen that in my forty years of banking where it won't be the same. It is not pretty when it is.
All right, good. That makes me feel better.
Better hope you never have one go south like. All right, bid award for lagoon repairs.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you are aware, December sixth, we opened a bid for the lagoon repairs and the bid was eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, thousand dollars. Quite a bit more than we anticipated it being, but we are mandated by TDEC and the state to fix some of the problems with the lagoon, shore up the, the, the berms. And what we've done is we've reduced the scope of the project back to what we have in our budget, which is five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So you've got paperwork of the original bid and then you have paperwork showing the three projects that we are recommending that we move forward on, which is the mobilization and erosion control, the riprap of the North Lagoon areas, BNC, and riprap of the North Lagoon area D. A lot of it is riprap because the, the banks are not holding up, which is what's causing the problem. And we do have five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget and that's what you would be awarding tonight in a reduced scope. Not saying we won't have to come back next year to do the rest of it, but at least we're getting started in the state. We'll see that we're making some progress.
Sure, we're moving.
Who, uh, who done this investigation or whatever that needs to be done? Did the state do it?
The state, they, they inspect us regularly. DeWitt Lawderson is the employee that has been there, you know, they do an annual report and tell us what needs to be done. They've been giving us the report and updating it regularly. We're kind of behind on this, but at the same time, we kept saying, we're gonna decommission a spray field, so how much do we have to spend on the lagoons? But these, since we're gonna be using the lagoons for stabilization and storage, we have to go ahead and make the improvements to the lagoons.
All I'm gonna say, this is pretty sad. We're gonna end up spending money every so often on these lagoons.
Yep.
You know, it's sad, it's sad.
The overall benefit, good news to me was that we can use the lagoons for storage in a wet weather event, which if we didn't have lagoons, then our sewer plant is overrun with stormwater that we can't handle. So eventually, the idea that we can pump water into the lagoons and pump it out is gonna be a benefit to us. So we can get rid of everything else but the lagoons.
We're always gonna have problems.
We'll always have upkeep, for sure.
Always.
Yep.
And it's not good.
No. I don't think anybody up here disagree with that.
And we need to find a way somehow of doing away with these lagoons. From here down the line, we're gonna have to, somebody here.
We, we've got five hundred and forty-five acres out there that we won't need, but we'll, we'll have to maintain the lagoons for storage for a wet weather event, or we will, we have no other option right now unless another option would come forward, because if you have a horrible rain, you're gonna overwhelm your sewer plant.
Do we have to use both of them?
I think the, the pump is working from the, sending it from the bottom out. I don't know that we could decommission one of them or not. That, that's a good question going forward.
Yeah.
I think we need to look at it, just my opinion. Cause that's, you're getting up very close to a million, though.
Oh, yeah? I think at some point, though, I, as, act, cause I've been watching this both eyes, cause it's, it's an issue. I think at some point, though, I, as, because I've been watching this both eyes, because it's, it's an issue. I think at some point in time, though, we, if we can get rid of that five hundred, few, some few odd acres that we've got up there, it'll get us a long way down the road getting all this done, and then if at some point in time, we get to a point where we can, then maybe we can get rid of them.
And you got to decide, you know, who you selling the five hundred acres to.
I bid.
Be careful, that's all I'll say.
Highest and best bid.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I left out best bid.
I think, I think we really won't know next steps on the lagoons until we get these sewer projects behind us, where they can see that we've gotten to the point where we need to be with everything else.
But you got to remember what that land is zoned for out there.
Not the property, the lagoon property isn't, but the rest of, whoever made the road is, yeah.
I'm just saying, somebody better be careful.
Oh, yeah. We've, we've had all kinds of inquiries about that, and it's something long-term.
Oh, yeah, we've had a lot of inquiries about it. Lots of.
Right now, we're just requesting that you do the bid award for this five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which is in the budget.
Which is in the budget. All right, any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion to accept the bid.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid award for the lagoon repairs.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Change order for wastewater construction, and I think I can cover this one because I had decided. All this is, there is no increase in cost of this, and all we're doing is giving them an additional sixty-three days, and for the main reason is, is giving parts.
Getting electrical parts for the new sewer plant, and I fully expect that we'll be back to you in the fall asking for another extension, but USDA, who is financing the project, will, every day has to have an explanation for it, and right now, we can justify the sixty-three, but the way electrical is running, I would imagine in October, we're probably going to be asking for another thirty days or so, but, but right now, we need that to move forward with the contractor.
And we heard last week about how parts for electrical are, that crawl.
Yeah, we don't need your vote on this because it does not involve money, but I always want to make sure that these change orders are always in the minutes, so that they're, we obviously discussed it. Anything that's going to involve any additional money would have to come to you for a vote.
But we're still, we're still in good shape, I guess, out at the sewer plant, right?
Moving forward.
They were out there yesterday pumping concrete for, for the new building. Rode out there, saw it in the air, I said, I'm going to look at it.
Going up late spring, yeah.
So. All right, general comments from citizens, Mr. Terry Brewer? Do you please come forward? Uh-oh, he's got a list with him.
Mayor, Commissioners, and I thank Miss Granberry for listening to this.
Terry, if you don't mind, state your name and your address.
I'm Terry Brewer, I live at five oh six Mockenbird Drive here in Mount Pleasant. Pretty much lifelong citizen of this town. Don't panic, I'm here to talk about taxes. Don't, don't panic, don't panic, it's a good thing. Now, Ms. Loretta gave me the opportunity to speak to her back before Christmas, and thank you for letting me talk to you, but she said, actually, I was the first one that she'd heard this from. Which my home is paid for, so come February, I have to cut a check for the taxes, county and city. The county's got a program set up, which started last year, which I learned it through a department head meeting, where you can do, don't correct me if my wrong, but I'm like direct draft to your bank account, and you can sign up where they will monthly take an amount out of your check, which when I started with the county, I started in March, if you do March, you'll have twelve equal payments over the, of course, year. So with my county taxes, February twenty-eighth, I don't have to send them any money, my taxes were paid. I couldn't tell you how big a turnover it would be that people would be interested in this. I just thought it would be something would be nice to bring before the commission tonight. You know, and if it's ten months or eleven months, then you'd have ten or eleven equal payments. Now, I know Ms. Gardner was talking about, you know, we have the big taxes in December, and then, of course, in February, which if, you know, like I say, it might not be that big participation, but it'd be some, that you'll be getting those taxes monthly that'll be coming out of my checking into the city, city budget. Now, I don't know everything about this, to be honest with you, but Randy Magnes, you know, we all people are familiar with him, and me and Fire Chief talked to him outside the annex one day, which I think is done through Next Gen with the computer system. And local government, and I don't know if the city does local government, but their computers that show you how to do that. But he would be more than willing, he said, if anybody wanted to reach out and talk to him. But like I say, nobody knew about this, and Ms. Gardner, that'd probably be the way to come before the commission. It would be great, then I wouldn't have to write no checks come February.
Well, Terry, to your point, Loretta, I think it's a grand idea, personally, because you, and, and I'm fortunate, Terry, just like you, here and got my home paid for. If you don't, you're dealing with escrow.
Correct.
So when you make your monthly payment on your house, you're taking out for your insurance and your taxes.
Right.
So it's the same type of program, you're paying it monthly versus in a big, so, once you get it paid for, you're right. Would it be better to have it a twelve-month interim? Yeah, I can't disagree with you at all.
And then, I don't know, cost-wise, what it would cost, that would be something that-
Three percent?
The cost is going to be in the software. Our software's not set up to handle it.
Money on that to do it, I don't think there's any cost to the taxpayer, is there?
No, no, there's no cost to the taxpayer.
I'm talking about to the city, though, sometimes it's three percent or so.
Yeah.
And, you know, older people that are retired, and maybe their homes are paid for, it might help them too.
That's what I'm saying, I mean-
You know, I'm, I'm still working, I'm retired once, I don't know how much longer my wife's going to make me continue to work.
Probably for the rest of your life, keep you awake at home.
I'll probably make full retirement age, but I want to thank y'all for letting me get up and speak tonight, and I know the word property taxes, but this was good.
Now, Terry, thank you.
She gave me that look. But when I talked to her the other day, I said, what's it about, I said, property taxes, and she, bless her heart, she let me come back here. So thank you all very much.
No, Terry, thank you, I mean, that's, that's, that would be a nice little attractive thing for the citizens.
We'll look into that benefit and get back to you on-
Yeah, please do.
I don't mind being a guinea pig with you, I'll be your first guinea pig.
Terry, thank you, man.
Thank you, Terry.
All right.
Include that in the budget.
Yeah, we would, yeah.
So it's something that may take a couple of years to get it implemented, but-
But if we, you know, if we got started now, maybe by, who knows? Because LGP's going to do it. So maybe they-
I'm sorry. Yeah, so this is the second time real property taxes has brought up, so I feel like this is my sign to talk to y'all about the delinquent tax, give you a-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So.
You didn't sign up.
I'll sit on this side of it. So we do a delinquent tax bill every year, or we do a delinquent tax lawsuit every year, so the delinquent taxes right now that are in the lawsuit for twenty twenty taxes, that I'm not sure, I think Debbie sent the list to y'all too, I don't know if they had it yet.
We, we shared it among staff, for sure. It's been in the paper.
Yeah, it's been in the paper, there's a short list of people who still owe delinquent taxes, it's a very short list.
Some of them are deceased.
Yes, and so I will give that to y'all, so that if you know anybody, if you know of any circumstances surrounding any of it, our goal is to have taxes paid and have nobody on this list, because that's always the goal, we'll get you that. Wanted to give a heads up before you get a list of ten random, you know, citizens. It has been in the paper, it's in the paper every, in the paper every week in December, so it should be done now. And then, if you saw the paper last week, I think, there was a new ad in there that advertises our delinquent tax bill for twenty twenty-one taxes. So it's this constant circle, so we are moving towards the end of the twenty twenty tax lawsuit, but we have to start the twenty twenty-one at the same time, so that list will be bigger, I'm happy to forward that to y'all as well, and just because the sooner people pay, the fewer add-ons, you know, title searches, attorneys, yes, interest, penalties. It ends up that the number that they pay is way more than what they owed, so.
Right. Then if they had just come forward and paid.
Yeah, and a lot of times that you don't have, people don't notice it, so that's why I was thinking with-
It's an heir that didn't know that there's, that somebody had passed away, that happens a lot, too, so.
We are very fortunate to have some good staff that have worked, did that number down.
Making phone calls.
Taking phone calls, getting on Facebook, finding people.
Oh, yeah.
They've done-
We got it down to almost nothing last year.
Yeah, it was pages and pages five years ago.
I can't tell you how happy that makes me, you know, even, even when we start sending out service, because we have to personally serve every person that has an interest, it used to be, you know, hundreds, and now it might be forty, so.
And, and at the end of it, it's usually less than-
No, yeah.
Two or three, you know. But it's, it's worked well, and, and there's those employees deserve a big compliment for that, because they really have, they've reached out to people that they knew, and the families or whatever, so it worked. All right, that's all we had, Simon, Mike, you got anything else?
No sir.
Really?
No sir.
Pam?
I don't either.
Entertain a motion, no jury? We got a bunch of them.
Motion, Matt.